Good afternoon and welcome to the Polk County School Board's work session. We will now call the work session for December 9th, 2025 to order. Thank you to our staff who are available and accessible to help address any questions. As a board, we strive to work with you to ensure we achieve our mission to provide a high-quality education for all students. I would like to start by reading our "Who Are We?" statement. We are the Polk County Leadership Governance Team. If we were to pick one phrase that define us, it would be student-centered because when we come together to work, we lean on our diverse backgrounds and experiences to ensure that our decisions are focused on providing a high-quality education for all students. The four most important things to our governance team are: operating with integrity, respecting our students, staff, families, and each other; establishing a culture where stakeholders feel valued, supported, and have opportunities for personal and professional growth; and supporting an approach of continuous improvement to ensure student outcomes. Collectively, we need to work on behalf of the children we serve and find avenues of agreement so that we can govern the district in an effective manner. There is no acceptable alternative. We will always collaborate in a respectful manner in order to enhance opportunities for each student and staff member. We will not disparage others. Our students will thrive because we will remain committed to supporting the whole child. We hope to engage and empower our students and stakeholders to create a community of lifelong learners. At this time, I would like to turn over our meeting to Superintendent Hyde to lead us in our work session today.
Good afternoon, everyone. Happy holidays. Thank you for being here. Board members, the first item that we have before us today on the superintendent's report is related to proposed rule development. So at this time, I will bring up the wonderful Ms. Teresa Griffin, who has the enviable task of presenting these each time, as well as Mr. Chad Davis.
Wow.
Chad, that did not come out the way I intended it to. I'm so sorry. How about newly appointed or soon-to-be-appointed county/ city commissioner? So congratulations.
Good afternoon, everyone. I am bringing just a few policies for you today. And this rounds out the batch of policies I've been bringing in the last several work sessions. So there will be a short little break. You won't have to see me for a little bit until Neola drops their next update, which usually comes towards the end of January. So by the time we go through that with staff and everything, depending on how large the update is, most likely we'll start bringing more policies back in March or April. So the first batch of policies are the nursing mothers' policies, Policies 1425, 3425, and 4425. The recommendation is to rescind those policies and instead adopt Policy 8280. And the changes to this policy is from the Federal Pumped Act, which expanded the classifications of what employees are listed. And the Fair Labor Standards Act, one thing that I want to point out is we're not changing the way we handle nursing mothers here at the district. We've always had a place for that in all of our employee groups. That's why we had it in the 1000s, 3000s, and the 4000s already. Neola only recommended, prior to this, only recommended us to have Policy 4425. We, as a district, when we adopted that policy, decided to also create 1425 and 3425. So we've already had the language basically there for all of the employee groups. But now that the Fair Labor Standards Act has been changed, they've just decided to use one policy to cover all the groups instead of three separate policies. Does anyone have any questions on the nursing mothers' policy?
Seeing none.
Okay. The next is our investments policy, 6144.01. And this is just based on Neola's proactive review of the policy, as well as input from our Investment Advisory Council, who Ms. Heather Jenkins worked with to provide the revisions that you see in there. So some of the changes in there are from Neola, and then some are directly from our Investment Advisory Council. Any questions on investments?
Seeing none.
Okay. And then our last couple of policies, Policy 6325, procurement, federal grants and funds, and Policy 6550, travel and expenses. Both of these are updated based on the Office of Management and Budget's revisions to the Uniform Grant Guidance Regulations. You may recall, back in September, I brought a handful of financial-related policies that were all updated based on this guidance. This is an extension of that. And actually, Policy 6325, I did bring to you back in September. Since then, staff reached out and we needed to adjust the threshold that was listed in that policy. So the only difference between when I brought it to you in September and what it looks like today is there's a micro-purchase threshold. That originally, the fill-in-the-blank said 5,000. Now it says 15,000, and that's just to align with the code of federal regulations. And then Policy 6550, our travel and expenses policy. There's some additional staff-initiated revisions in that for in-county and out-of-county travel. Policy 7230 is our gifts to the school district. And this is just part of Neola's ongoing efforts to review and refine existing policies. So it's getting rid of our existing template and updating to our current template, but nothing is changing with the way we handle gifts to the school district. Any questions on those?
Seeing none.
Okay. One thing that I wanted to point out, that's all I have for you today, but I wanted to point out tonight, you are voting, there's a public hearing, you are voting on a large group of policies that we brought over several work sessions. Then there's also, Mr. Green is asking for authority to advertise the policies I just presented today, as well as those that I presented in November. The only thing on that is in November, I brought to you the drug-free workplace policy. Since then, Mr. Davis has had a conversation with risk management, and they're actually looking at that a little further. We may have to refine that policy, so that won't be on his list to ask for authority tonight. That'll come to you at a later date. And that's all I have.
Seeing no questions or comments. Thank you, Ms. Griffin.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. The next item up we have before us will be presented by Ms. Rouse and Ms. Smith, and this is the evaluation team proposal. Good afternoon, ladies.
Hi, good afternoon. Good afternoon, Chair Sharfless, Vice Chair Keyes, School Board Member, Superintendent. Hi. Thank you for a few minutes this afternoon for us to present a proposal about an evaluation team at the district level. We're presenting today because the quality implementation of our employee evaluation systems is critical to staff growth and retention. And so you're going to hear this afternoon about some current challenges that we have sharehouse and peer districts, how do they staff for evaluation system support, and present some potential opportunities for the district to make some improvements. And I've got my colleague here, Beth Smith, with us, Senior Director of Professional So employee evaluation systems definitely support District Strategic Plan Goal 2, developing great teachers and leaders. With that, we know when an employee receives effective feedback, that's coupled with professional growth opportunities, that does lead to more job satisfaction because they get better at their practice, which can in turn help retain staff. So in the end, when an evaluation system is used correctly, it's a huge lever for staff growth. What we are proposing today, you're going to see, is a centralized evaluation team, which we do not currently have, that would lead to more data-informed leadership, and then let us be more intentional with our staff development around evaluation, essential performance criteria, and so forth, and obviously more consistent evaluator implementation because there's a lot of variability across how supervisors implement the instruments, not because a lack of trying, but really just not consistent and deep support and development along the way. So with that, we wanted to kind of try to give a snapshot, excuse me, of what the current workflow is. So you'll see here that there are seven major employee groups that have evaluation systems. But with that, so under these seven umbrellas are every single employee, their positions classified in one of these seven. So you've got all your teacher evaluation systems, from classroom to non-classroom, all of those, there's tons of positions that fall in those. You have your ask-me groups, your custodial bus drivers and so forth group. You have your educational support personnel, which are your paras, your secretaries, in that group. Then you have your school-based administrators, principals, assistant principals. They have different standards, they have different instruments for their evaluation systems. And then you have three groups for district staff. You have district-level professional technical, which are like your senior coordinators, your analysts, your senior managers; district-level instructional staff, like your curriculum specialist; and then finally, your district-level administrative staff, anyone from an assistant director and above. So across that, you can see, there are so many different instruments and evaluation systems. Whoever knows that information, it becomes very complex to be able to navigate across all of them and be able to support any employee. Currently, it's worrisome because we have just one or two people that are keepers of all of that knowledge. And that's why we're here for you today. So what we try to give is a snapshot. You'll see the communication volume. This was just one 30-day sample between two staff that are currently in professional development. You can see the numbers there, but they don't tell the whole story. So we know, like, one IIQ ticket, it's one number in that 108, but it may have had five to six touchpoints back and forth before a resolution was found. So it is a heavy volume of work, and the current, the two people that do this currently, this is just a slice of what they're doing. They are not dedicated to supporting employee evaluation systems solely. So what we wanted to do is share with you how some of our peer districts compare to their evaluation teams and how they're staffed for that. So we did reach out to Duval, Orange, Pasco, Hillsboro, Pinellas, Lee, Palm Beach, Broward, and Miami Dade. We did hear back from Albitu, and you're about to see that data, but what we found overall is most of the large districts, they do have a dedicated team managing this work, and primarily they are managed by human resources. There are instances they are managed in professional development, but in those districts, professional development is under HR, is a division of HR. So on this slide, you'll see here, it says Miami Dade Zero. Unfortunately, we were not able to gain contact with anyone in Miami Dade, so I don't know definitely what they do. But in Broward, they have eight dedicated staff. Hillsboro, we did end up hearing back from them recently. They have five. Orange County has six. Palm Beach has eight. Duval, it says seven there. Recently, we just corrected that. This morning, actually, it should say four. In Polk, we don't have any. Lee, they have two. Pinellas, we did not hear back from. And Pasco has two. So when we look at this, we see that Polk is somewhat of an outlier in that we don't have a dedicated team or staff to manage the systems. And so what we would like is a team to ensure compliance, to provide consistent training, and to manage reporting, which is not happening at all right now, and support supervisors so that they can implement in a quality way. So we have opportunities to strengthen Polk's evaluation system. Currently, the Senior Director, myself, and Senior Coordinator of Professional Development manage the evaluations for approximately 14,000 employees. While the Professional Development Department has managed these evaluation systems effectively to the best of our ability, the workload and complexity continues to grow. Our system is multifaceted, and it includes components from several departments. So for instance, Professional Development really works on evaluator certification, SAO support, things of that nature. We also partner with AA&amp;E, who does tasks like pulling state data and linking that to instructional and administrator evaluations. The IST department manages Journey, which is our online system for recording and storing our evaluations. And HR works with ensuring adherence to Article 15 of the CBA, working through appeals and the grievance process. So creating a dedicated team will provide a team that is focused and dedicated to this work to create a cohesive system, as opposed to it just being a slice of someone else's So on this slide, we show the workflow structure. The current workflow is that in Professional Development, two staff members, which is myself, the Senior Director, and a Senior Coordinator, manage the day-to-day operations of the evaluation system. And I'm going to be completely honest and transparent, I do not shoulder 50% of that workload. As Senior Director, I am managing every professional learning initiative in our district, from tips to principal internship and everything in between. So I jump in when and how I can. So the majority of this work is falling on one Senior Coordinator at this time. With a dedicated evaluation team, we would have a touchpoint that can coordinate with PD, HR, IST, and AA&amp;E to create that cohesive system that could best support our employees. So we have some current model challenges. Our workflow at this time is unsustainable. It leads to delays and inconsistent application of the evaluation requirements in some departments and schools. We have evaluation systems that are reported to the state, and those are all in great standing. But we do have departments that do not have to report to the state or any other governing body, and we have employees in some of those departments that we have discovered have not received consistent evaluations. So it really is our belief that every employee deserves an evaluation so that they know how they are performing within their role and how they can continue to grow within their chosen career. We feel this is happening due to a lack of support, guidance, and monitoring, which a dedicated team could bring and provide every employee what they deserve within their evaluation system. Most importantly, this would allow the Professional Development Department to refocus on strategic initiatives that support our district-wide instructional improvement and continue the work that we do to help all instructional staff obtain those high levels for all students. Like I said, we support everything from day zero tips employees through employees that are wanting to become leaders through the Pila program and all the other pieces that teaching and learning needs. This proposal moves us toward a more proactive, organized, and data-driven evaluation process. The potential roles and responsibility of a proposed team would be an evaluation team lead that would develop district-wide evaluation strategy, ensure statutory compliance, present evaluation data and insight to key stakeholders, monitor trends for evaluation policy and procedural improvements; a professional learning lead, which would design and deliver professional learning programs for district and school-based staff, conduct research on evaluation best practices, collaborate with key stakeholders to integrate into manuals and timelines, provide individualized coaching and observer calibration to ensure adherence to evaluation rubrics; and an operational support, which would resolve instant IQ tickets, troubleshoot system issues, identify reoccurring issues, recommend improvements to enhance efficiency, prepare and distribute monthly reports summarizing evaluation metrics. So that is our presentation for today. Thank you so much for your time, and we welcome any questions you may have.
Before I call in any board member questions or comments, just wanted to provide a little bit more context for the board. We have spoken numerous times over the last probably year, year and a half, about the need to revise and ensure that each employee's evaluation clearly reflects and provides us with the opportunity to provide them feedback on duties and responsibilities directly related to their role. In many instances, we have generic evaluation instruments that seek to capture everyone under one umbrella. And so there is a great deal of work here, and this is why they get so many questions because there are times, even when the board is evaluating its employees, there may be areas, and we have had this discussion before, which ones apply, which ones may not. Are they explicitly aligned to the duties and responsibilities? Are they not? So this allows, this team essentially would function to ensure that, number one, we're compliant with all statutory requirements, and that, number two, probably the more important part, I think you heard them express, is the need to ensure that staff feel that their evaluation instrument accurately reflects what they do each day and will give them the appropriate feedback in order for us to sustain growth, professional and personal development over time. So I just wanted to provide that context. Mr. Keyes.
So the first comment that I have is, I love how this proposal attaches to our strategic plan, right? As kind of, this is my level of study in my graduate program in leadership. I want to grow and nurture from within, and I think this allows us to do so. But with that, I have a few questions. One of those, thank you, you already answered, because when I saw those other districts and I saw Miami Dade and Hillsboro Zero, I was like, wait a minute, what are they doing? If they can do it without doing this, how can we? I'm always thinking about money, right? So that was the first, but thank you for answering that question. I think the second one I have is, following your current workflow structure and the proposed, my question is, is this simply a restructuring or allocation of current assets? Or are we talking about a new lift? And I guess specifically, what I'm looking for is, what always boils down to me is, what is, are there additional costs with this? If we're just simply moving, you know, chess pieces, that's great, right? If we can say, hey, this is your new defined role, because as the superintendent already touched on, if we're doing an evaluation process, it's not a one-size-fits-all. We can't develop somebody if we're just kind of saying we're going through the motions and we're required to evaluate you, and we want to evaluate you, so this is all we're doing. But if we really pour into that with, okay, this is what your evaluation said, now let's take those areas and look for some gains, I think that's a very positive thing. So that's kind of really, you know, my first question on that, or my second question and statement is, is there additional cost for this? Is it simply moving people? Or are we looking on bringing on more staff for this?
So today was just to see, give you input and give you an idea of the need. So we didn't come with like a budget impact analysis, which we could do moving forward if the board is interested. But this would involve the current players in the roles of HR, IST, HR, and PD would remain as touchpoints and serve in that circle of collaborators with this district team, but it would be three different new people that would serve as the team, and then they would be the hub of coordinating with the different departments.
So follow-up to that, knowing what you know about that, is there a potential to take somebody in a role that they're currently serving in, where they may already have those touchpoints, and rekind of assign to that new role? Are these going to be, as we're looking at now, potentially brand-new roles?
No. As we've done each budget cycle, we attempt to see if there's an opportunity for us to consolidate existing vacancies or opportunities to reassign and realign those duties and responsibilities. consolidate existing vacancies or opportunities to reassign and realign those duties and responsibilities. So that's always our primary pursuit. And then, second to that, if we need to supplement that department somehow, we would make that recommendation during the staffing plan request later on this year. But I will provide the board with every assurance that, again, first and foremost, we try to maximize our existing expenditures and resources so that there is no additional fiscal impact. But as a large and growing districts, we're going to have needs that sometimes will exceed our ability to staff internally. But we always look at that first.
Excellent. Well, thank you for that, and I'll tell you, just, I'm excited about seeing this and where it goes, and looking forward to some more information on it.
Thank you.
Mr. Sharpless.
Yeah, Mr. Keys, that was one of my concerns, just cost and what was going to be the bottom dollar, you know, bottom-line dollar for this. But another one of mine, I'm just a little confused, Superintendent, by something you said, and also kind of with the presentation, I just want to make sure I'm clear. We talk about a centralized management and standardization of evaluation systems. So we're standardizing it, but we're also individualizing it, so I'm kind of confused. If you can explain that a little bit.
So the standardization is standardizing the process and procedures and timelines in which we will reevaluate or review or revisit, I'm trying to find different words so that they make sense, or revisit the evaluation instrument, right? So we currently have evaluation instruments that are probably 10 years old, 12 years old, 15 years old, which no longer truly reflect the duties and responsibilities of those individuals. So procedurally, you're standardizing the process in which each one will be reviewed. You're standardizing the process in which, a timeline in which they will be reviewed again in the future, or the revision process. And then from there, you're individualizing it, again, based not on the individual, the person, you're basing it off the job duties and responsibilities, that position itself as a position number.
So I just want to make sure I got this clear. You're standardizing the process of, you know, dates, all that kind of stuff, and, but you're individualizing the instrument to the position.
Right. With respect to groups.
Okay.
Right? So all custodians within a specific job description will have the same evaluation instrument. You're not going to have 200 custodians, each have an individualized, we're not giving an individualized evaluation plan to each employee. Although, you know, conceptually, it's a great idea. The problem is logistically, how do you, how do you pull that off each year?
I want to talk about workflow.
Yeah.
Right.
So that's what we're looking for.
No, we don't want that either.
But I didn't want the general assumption to be that we're giving every individual their own evaluation. It should reflect their duties and responsibilities.
Thank you. That was my main question.
Thank you.
Ms. Fields.
Thank you. I had some of the same questions that the gentleman had. I did want to know if you can give, give me the number of structures that's in other districts, that you can repeat that? Because I think you said there was a couple of ones that were initially zeros, but now you've gotten information.
Yes, ma'am. So Miami Dade, we never heard back from, unfortunately. We will continue to try to get that data and bring it back to you. Broward, they have eight staff members on their evaluation team. Hillsborough, we did hear from them early this morning, actually. They have five. Orange County has six. Palm Beach has eight. Duval actually has four. Lee has two. Pinellas, we did not hear back from. Pasco has two.
Ms. Rouse, will you just update that one slide and send it to me?
Absolutely.
Send it to the board.
Yes.
Then my other question is, and this is just, I don't really expect to get an answer, but ultimately, I think one of you said that some of the staff have not been evaluated. And so ultimately, whose responsibility is that to make sure that they are evaluated? I would imagine it would be their supervisor.
Correct. And so, in all transparency, the state requires us to report teacher evaluations, administrator evaluations. There's no requirement at the state level for any other evaluation to be reported. So what would happen, we would hope with an evaluation team, is that there would be consistent monitoring and reporting so that we could catch those things early and speak with supervisors, employees, what have you, to make sure that we could minimize that happening. Right now, there's sometimes really good oversight of a supervisor and their supervisor, and those things are happening. Maybe other times, it's not as such tight oversight. And I don't blame them, I'm just saying sometimes it's a lack of knowledge and knowing. And so the team, that would be their responsibility, to make sure that there are no gaps in our system and to support people so that they can do the tasks that they're required to do.
Thank you. And I would just say that I don't know how two people have been able to do all of this.
It's been really cumbersome. And at times, in PD, it feels like you're being taken away from really what you should be doing, is supporting teaching and learning and the training around the evaluation systems. So that has not been up to par like we want it to be, because we've been pulled into doing daily professional technical tasks, because it's constant. Even outside of the evaluation windows, employees have questions about their evaluations. Supervisors have questions along the way.
Well, thank you for addressing it and coming up with the plan of action.
Thank you.
Ms. Miller.
Thank you. I do have a few questions. One was cost-related, which you're going to get to us later. The employees that you read in the other districts, this is their sole responsibility and their role is to complete this? Is that accurate?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And I'm interested in the data that will come from this. Not only, it will take a long time to get through all the departments, but I'm assuming that it will, you will start over with reevaluating that tool and how it was used and how it can be updated. Is that something we would have to create, or is that something that you have a resource for, similar to other districts?
So there are companies that provide, you know, packages, evaluation systems. They cost a lot of money, so, but our teacher evaluations are tied to our collective bargaining agreement, so any changes to any of those instruments have to go through formal bargaining negotiation process. But the district-level staff, we could use teams internally to do that work, to create something that is meaningful for different employee groups without doing any purchases, because we do have our own platform, Journey.
Okay.
And our programmers work through that all the time, and they would just need to make the changes in Journey. I say just, but I'm not a programmer, I realize that's heavy lift. But we could do that in-house.
I think that's your biggest gap, because your teacher evaluations, there's so much accountability with the state with that, that what I've experienced in my time is that it's the, it's everybody under that, the district staff, where it's just not consistent. The evaluations aren't consistent, how they're given has not been consistent. So I'm hoping that forming something like this would help that, because then we could go back and use that data to, you know, to address the issues where we have departments, where we have one person overseeing 30 and somebody on that same pay scale oversees very few, like that kind of. I think this will provide data to show usage of employees, too. Thank you.
Dr. Allen.
Superintendent, thanks for the presentation, Ms. Rouse. I think this is right up your alley from your past experience, and as you move into our Chief of Staff role, so, and you got, you got a great partner next to you as well. I do miss seeing Ms. Smith around District 1 schools, but I appreciate everything that you did during your time. Questions that I was pondering, and obviously, my colleagues hit a lot of the questions I had formulated, but was there any particular district model that stuck out to you in, in your comparative analysis or anything like that, that you're like, oh, I really like this model?
So every other district pretty much has like a Marzano framework that they purchase and they, I'm not necessarily jealous of that, because it's something you have to purchase and pay for annually, so I'm, that's not what I'm jealous about. What I'm, what I like, how, Orange County, I'll give them as an example. So they have their team of, what's that, six? And so although they're a team, they come with different experiences. So you've got some people coming from like an HR background, some coming from a data background, a technology background, right? But they've come together in this hub, so now collectively, they can collaborate across the system. So you can still be an expert in your field, although you're part of the evaluation team, but you've got to learn the whole system so that you can collaborate across the team and across departments. So I would say that would be one that was most interesting to us.
Nice. Yeah. The next question sort of piggybacks off of Ms. Miller's comment, but what type of like measurable improvements, you know, we should expect in timelines and compliance? Any, any thoughts on that? I know this is a high concept at this point, but...
So I would say we would want to make goals around the data reporting and changes that take place because of the data reporting. We would want to make goals around the training component, making sure all of our staff receive the training and understand and can apply the instruments.
Updating the tools. Updating some of the tools that we're using for specific roles and making sure that those that have been 10, 12 years in the system, that we are updating them to be more current to their specific job responsibilities.
Okay.
There's so many needs, we'd have to really prioritize, but we would do that. We would prioritize, we would make timelines, action plans, so that you would know what to expect year to year from the team.
Great. One last question, and you know, you mentioned the seven umbrellas, and then the thought around the one division in regards to being required by the state. So that will frame my question then in regards to that group of individuals underneath that umbrella. But like, what tangible differences would principals, evaluators, and employees experience, you know, once this is in place?
So district staff, I would say they would mostly agree there's been no training, pretty minimal training that they've received on, if I'm a supervisor, what I need to do in the evaluation process. They receive documents. They receive a manual, they receive timelines, reminders, updates. But as far as the side-by-side, the video modules, all those additional supports, they could expect to start to see those types of things. And also customer service, where we could come, we'd have this person to sit with the supervisor to help them walk through the learning of that. A principal would hopefully see better understanding from their teachers of what the principals are looking for as they're doing their observations and evaluating them. Teachers would hope to expect to see that their principals would be able to give better feedback. We'd have more capacity and staff to do more training with leaders on how do you have a constructive conversation and get input from the teacher and let them guide their action planning. So they could expect to see a lot of improvements on every level with the usage, because sometimes people feel like it's being done to them. That's a lack of understanding of the system, because we should never feel that way. It should be collaboration and no surprises at the end of the year.
Very good. Thanks. I think that's all the questions I have, Superintendent.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Wallace.
Thank you. Again, echoing everyone else's comments and sentiments, thank you for what you all are doing. I had a couple of questions that I think have already been addressed. I had a paint-the-picture question, which I think you just did, in terms of how this comes down to the classroom level. So thank you for doing that. I had a couple just of thoughts to pique, or this piques my interest, and as we go through this process where, you know, things I'll be paying attention for, is that I appreciate what you all have done to look at our peer districts. And just like what you mentioned with Orange County, I'm going to be curious to see, I don't care if they have 100 people dedicated to this, I want to know what does this meant for student achievement?
Okay.
Right? So I would look at all 67 districts, and obviously, we can't compare ourselves directly to Wacola County, or Taylor County, or Monroe County, right? I'm going all over the state. But if we found a peer, not just because they're like us, but just because they're a fellow district of the state of Florida, or even nationally, you know, looking at turnaround efforts in some of the major districts across the country, was Charlotte Mecklenburg doing something right? Is Houston doing something, you know, whatever? There's, there are, and I'm happy to, and I'm sure Superintendent Hyde and any number of people next to my left and right, but to connect you guys to certain experts. Dr. Vidi, and I know Superintendent Hyde knows him, but he's up in Detroit now. Alberto Carrojo is in LA. You know, that we've got a cool stable of people to talk to coast to coast to get ideas. When we're a top 30 district in our size, there's no reason we couldn't pick up the phone to research those best practices. That would be my piece of feedback on there. And I think going to Mr. Sharpless's question about standardization is, I would like to see that every employee who gets one of these evaluations be perfectly clear that each category somehow ties back to our strategic plan. So that's something I've learned from my employer, is we have these buckets that are tied to our corporate strategic plan, and even though I do external relations, that has nothing to do with what a field technician is doing when they install your cable, right? But the company finds a way to say, when you're doing these buckets, this goes back to our overall organizational mission. And I feel like that would be a really great way to make every employee, no matter where they sit and what they're doing, understand, you know, how they fit into the larger mission. And I'm interested to, just again, we don't have to talk about it today, but 360-degree evaluations? So is there a way for the employee to, it doesn't need to be as predominant as, there's a reason that there's a supervisor and a manager, right? But for a way for our employees to feel like they're able to give feedback about how they're being led, and if they feel like their managers are answering their questions and being responsive, you know, that's, I feel like that's a way to build more trust. I think something, when y'all edit the slide, what would be clearer is if you're still missing a number from a district, put a question mark rather than a zero.
Yes.
Yeah, because then that'll be clear that you're not implying that that was final. And yeah, I think, I just am really excited to, I know that resources are tough and will definitely have to do our budget work, but I don't want to be penny-wise, pound-fullish. Like, I feel like if we find some best practices that tie back to student achievement, and perhaps through more frictionless approaches to these things, these other districts we study find savings because they have better retention, or they, they find better achievement, their enrollment's growing because they're attracting excellent, whatever the reason, right? We might be able to, and also, of course, we want to know what vendors and models they're using, too. So, thank you.
Thank you for the feedback.
There are no further questions or comments, ladies. Thank you.
Thank you.
Board members, the next item is a continuing item that was, the board requested further dialogue and information on, and this is related to the purchase, or the recommended purchase of the Lake Marion site for district future development in northeast Polk County.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Superintendent, members of the board. So again, this is just more a continuation of your intent to have more dialogue and discussion regarding this proposed venture, if you will, for the district that staff's brought before you to consider an acquisition of a future land banking site up in the northeast of Polk County. Again, everyone realizes that Polk County is a very large county, has a very large footprint with, within which to operate. So with that all being said, I'm not necessarily going to regurgitate the exact same slide deck, but really just be here to receptive and answer questions that you may have had since our last work session.
Mr. Sharpless.
Yes, so I, I emailed these questions a while back, and I just want to make sure that I'm clear. I just want to feel comfortable. And so I, I know we have currently 15 properties around Polk County that we have banked for various different uses. Superintendent, I appreciate you providing that to me, just so I can understand. Generally, I have a concern about land banking at this time during our current climate. I'm just going to say that's, that's a concern of mine. But I have to balance that with fiscal responsibility, right? So if, you know, we didn't go through and purchase a piece of property and that, you know, becomes scarce in that area, prices shoot through the roof, right? And so I, it's a, I just want to, want you to know, it's like a internal struggle I deal with, but understood. But my question is, so if we, because a lot of this has to do with the direction of the board, I understand that, but what would be ideal, an ideal timeline for when this property would be developed for intended use? Do you have any idea for that?
So with that, that would be almost a conditions-driven timeline, based off of when utility lines would be extended. When we started, when I did a review of some of the residential growth, specifically within the Point Ciana area, and I just did a data poll from the Board of County Commissioners, who has the jurisdiction for issuing all permits within Point Ciana, and I did that actually around 12:05. So with that, over the last four years, they've issued 227 new building home permits. And to remind the board, the Point Ciana area, that is an area of the county that the state already pre-entitled for growth, meaning there are lots that have already been platted and created, they already are entitled for permits today. The only thing they're waiting on are extension of utility lines. And again, before I came, before this work session, I reviewed Toho Pica Liga, who is a utility provider, providing water and wastewater for that area. They are, again, extending utility lines within some of these already existed, pre-platted subdivision lots. They're already extending lines to already serves more of those lots. But in terms of numbers, everyone likes data and numbers here. So in 2025, as of today, there were 47 new home building permits issued. In 2024, there were nine. 2023, there were 30. 2022, there were 141. And within, across the Point Ciana area, which is from an urban planner, is a development of regional impact, there are several thousand homes that were approved by the state, and they were already pre- that were approved by the state, and they were already pre-entitled. So there are still several thousand units to be developed within that area. But again, they're already pre-entitled, they are preempted from concurrency, because the state already vested them when the state approved this. So again, when we were, when we were looking at the needs of trying to project forward, look forward, not just five years, but we're looking 10 years and 20 years at the eventual build out of the northeast of Polk County, this is what we're looking towards. And again, what drew us to this is that, again, it is in a, the proximity of it, based off of where it is located within the county, and its possible uses, even if it is a mixture of uses, whether it's educational as well as noneducational, meaning a maintenance facility, a warehouse, a transportation depot. To put it in context, the closest maintenance shop around that area is in Lake Wales, and they have to traverse US 27. So imagine the windshield time that it takes to get you from Lake Wales all the way to the northeast. So there are countless hours just spent driving just from that shop to get up to northeast. So again, these are all things we were considering, we tussled with it, trying to, okay, is this really worth, is the juice worth the squeeze in this instance? And so we do have other land bank properties. Are they necessarily located where we would like them? Not necessarily, because growth patterns have changed throughout time. And as a part of our, the facilities planning and real estate department, what we are constantly doing is we are reevaluating our portfolio of properties. Do they still serve the interest for the district today, tomorrow, and in the foreseeable future? And if they don't serve that need, we would bring back forth a proposal of, hey, maybe we need to consider surplusing the site.
And that brings up my my other question. This could go either to the Superintendent or to you, Mr. Macklemore. So let's say we get to a point where we would like to offload this land quickly. How quick can we actually either sell or develop it, either one? How do I put this? Make sure I word this right. If we get to a point where we want to either develop and/or sell this property, how quickly can we do that? And what's the process for that?
This proposed site, so assuming that the district were to take ownership of it, how fast could we surplus it? For a case in point, when we surplus the Claycut facility, the Claycut Building up on Daniel Jenkins, that took us around 180 days, because we had to do some due diligence, do surveys, we had to actually subdivide the property, because it was contiguous to the campus of Daniel Jenkins. We had to do some additional reporting to DOE to say, hey, yes, we are officially declaring surplus of this building, create a new parcel, legals, all said and done around 180 days.
As for surplusing, but what if we decide we want to develop it? How quickly can we get it developed?
Development, once we identify a use, we had to go through the entitlement process, which again, we've already started the, we've had some initial discussions through the school site selection committee. We've already voiced that to our county partners, who that's who we would work with, because this is their jurisdiction. It's not Haynes City. They have voiced no objections, they've voiced no comments that would lead us to believe that they would not be supportive of any of development of the site itself. Development for entitlements, it could take anywhere, just for zoning purposes, we'll use zoning, four to six months, and then to actually start turning dirt. Again, you're dealing with procurement cycle, yours, how do you want to, your project delivery mechanism, how do you want to build it? If it's CM at risk or public-private partnership, it takes time until we identify which mechanism. There are multiple avenues we could go, so it's hard for me to give you a timeline, so.
Well, and the reason I'm asking this question is I'm just, there's concern. I've made this wear to the Superintendent of my concern, and it's not with this specific property. It's with the whole idea of buying property right now that we're not going to immediately start developing. And so that's, again, it's a genuine, genuine, again, it's an internal struggle for me, right? I know if we don't get property in that area now, then the price could shoot up in the future because of development. Okay, so that's on one side. The other side, I'm just concerned about land banking in general right now. So it's just an internal struggle for me. And and again, it's, I don't want to buy a piece of property and then it be taken away from us. And that's, that's my point.
Considering the three proposed uses that uses that we outlined for the board previously, and then I provided a reminder at the last meeting that it could become a bus depot, could be utilized for facilities and warehousing, which we are in desperate need of, both of those first two items. And then ultimately, it could be utilized for a K8 or a middle school, or whatever we decide to put out there based off population density and, you know, the factors that are driving enrollment needs. At the end of the day, you can co-locate multiple of those things on the site, and that's the benefit of the site. The fastest thing to do would be essentially a bus depot. But you still have statutory and procedural requirements that we have to abide by, because you still have to develop the infrastructure to a certain extent. So we could, so long as we earmark it for a particular project, it's not the project's completion date that matters, it's when we move, the board votes on a proposal, and we begin that process of due diligence and everything else that we're going to be doing to basically begin construction on that campus. That's, that protects that property from anyone being able to step in after the fact. I do have this.
That makes me more comfortable.
And I have this on the agenda for our board retreat, and I'll be sending out the draft agenda to board members today, because there's a lot to have a conversation around that, including some of the properties we currently have. Some of those properties may or may not continue to be in areas where we're experiencing growth. And we may not necessarily look down the road 15, 20 years and see the need for that property and longer. Well, that creates an opportunity for us. Do we engage with a current landowner or someone else in the county? They may live out of county, I shouldn't restrict it to that, but an individual who owns property, is there an opportunity for us to land swap with someone else? Do we want to put it on the market? Do we want to do something? And again, related to a topic I'm bringing back based off your request, are we doing something for housing for staff? So there are a lot of things that are coming related to this topic, so we'll be addressing that formally at the retreat, because I do need to get some direction and input from the board in order to move forward. But again, to address and provide some reassurance, it's not when the project is completed, it's when, if we procure that property and we go ahead and notify individuals or the BOCC for whatever zoning requirements there are, so long as we've done our due diligence and we've dotted all our, crossed our Ts, that essentially will protect the property from some of the concerns that you've expressed here.
And if I may have one other point, too. With the submission of last year's five-year capital plan, staff did indicate the need for the district as an unfunded, unfunded project of the need of a maintenance, noneducational facility needed in the northeast. So DOE is aware that the district does have a need in the northeast. So we've tried to bookend it, if you will.
Thank you, Mr. Macklemore. And that gives me, that gives me an assurance, and I appreciate that, that it's not the actual completion date, it's when we start going through the process. And I would, I would, I would certainly echo, we have an affordability crisis in Polk County right now. And and I appreciate you bringing that up in our next retreat, because we have to do something for affordable housing for our staff, so.
That'll be discussed at the retreat, just for, so I can clarify, at the retreat, but I am bringing it formally as a workshop item in January.
Thank you. Appreciate you answering my questions.
Mr. Keys?
Oh, gosh. So I don't think it's a secret what, how I feel kind of about this. And I'm going to talk about some of the things that Chair Sharpless talked about, and I think it's the timing of it. I'm not going to disagree that we need, you know, additional warehousing, you know, maintenance depot, things of the sort. But I think to me, it's all about location and where it kind of meets the need for some of those. Question, questioning growth in that particular area, because all of the acreage on the northeast and of that area is all South Fort Water Management District that's never going to be developed, right? We have some things in the east that will be developed potentially. I know that's all been platted out for development. But the other thing that I'll talk about, too, is something I've brought up numerous times, is I, unlike, and I'm not going to speak for all the board members, I'm making a big assumption here, but I doubt the rest of the board members have driven down that road for the last 30 years. I have. My grandmother lived out there for that long. And you're not getting anything in that area as far as traffic wise. As a matter of fact, it's gotten so bad that that area is now used as a cut through from the traffic, the increased traffic on Hatchin Hall to get to the other side, you know, because the traffic on Marygold. So they're taking that as a cut through. And I went to inspect a property almost right across the street from this, this land. And whereas before, years and years and years ago, I could get out on that road with no problem at all, and I had to wait almost 10 minutes to pull out of a driveway on a two-lane road. So my question is, yes, we, you know, we got 16,000 feet of potential force main, they have to be put out there first, which is a phenomenal cost, you know, millions of dollars to bring that much force main to the area. But the other thing is, which, you know, Toho is touched on, but what hasn't been touched on is the development and widening of that road. So I think for a school, it's a no-go. I think for a maintenance particular facility, a depot, something like that, it is, it is foreseeable. But I think that goes back to the question of timing. And when we have, and specifically, we're potentially going, or we've agreed as a board, we're going out for additional, you know, referendums for teacher pay, which I know these are different buckets, so to speak. But in an, in an area, we're going out, and then we have also this plan that we've put forward, that we're going a large plan to assess our facilities. And we have just probably, and we don't even know what the cost of those yet. I think we bucketed aside somewhere around 40, 50 million dollars. I'm not in the, I'm not, I'm not a fan of spending the agreed upon price of $9 million when we know we have PM and maintenance on our existing facilities coming up, that we don't even know what the cost is yet. So again, I don't think it's, it's ever, or I'm not going to say ever, that's dangerous. I don't think in, currently, it's a good site for a school because of where it's at. I could see it as a potential site for, you know, facilities. I would, if that were the case, I would knock 15 acres off of it, because I don't think we need 90 acres for a maintenance depot or warehouse. You know, we could see some of that land, some of those go away, but I just, I don't think now's the time with all the things that are coming up on our schedule, the nature of cuts, and and some of, frankly, the unanswered questions as far as, you know, roadway and that kind of stuff, and when, like, again, I just don't think now's the proper time. And like I said, I'm not saying never, but I just don't think now's the time.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Miller?
Thanks, Charles. We've talked several times about many of the things that we're discussing today. But I appreciate the work you've done with the county with this. Unfortunately, the infrastructure of this entire county, especially on that side, is problematic. If this property was towards Dade City, I would tell you, why bother? Because, you know, we've had the conversations, even my district has moved, you know, closer. I'm going further into Auburndale, because people are moving, you know, not on KNI's beautiful north side of Lakeland as much as the other sides. So I understand the need. I also think that meeting with the maintenance departments and visiting the depots we have now and the maintenance facilities, the one thing they tell me, they talk about that drive time and that windshield time to get to, to get to that side of the county and to get to those schools and the needs they have out there. So I could see where this would be useful. 20 years licensed real estate broker, I can tell you that investing in land, especially in that area, is never a bad idea. If they don't, if we don't build this, it easily can be sold to build something else, and it will, there'll be lots of homes right next to each other, and the roads will still be an issue. And so I trust in the work that's been done with this, and I appreciate you bringing this back. I think we've talked about this now two to three times in a work session, but you've always been very readily accessible for questions. And thanks for coming back today for more of those.
If I may, just on the topic of roadway networks, I think I shared last time that the county has already identified a project to where they are going to be straightening Lake Marion Creek Drive as it enters out on the Cypress Parkway. Currently, as the road exists today, it takes about a 90-degree turn as you're traveling, say, north, northwest. Then it takes a pretty sharp turn to the west before it dumps out on the Cypress Parkway. The county's already identified, and they're entering into a project where they're going to redirect that road to be more perpendicular of an intersection with Cypress Parkway, to where that would be a signalized intersection.
There are no further questions or comments. Mr. Macklemore, thank you.
I pressed one. I don't know if it, did it hit?
No, ma'am.
Oh, sorry.
There you go. Ms. Wallace?
I apologize, Superintendent. Still getting comfortable. I just wanted to mention for the record, I did submit a bunch of what I would call legal risk management questions, and I appreciate you and Mr. Green and the team, or whomever else assisted with answering those in short order. Thank you. My only request would be that I was asking a lot of my questions based on the draft contract language that had been presented to us, which I know is not final. And and based on the feedback, it looks like a lot of those details will be eventually inserted and contemplated. But I would, I don't know the normal protocols, but if we as a board just have the opportunity, should, should this decision be approved by the board, and we are going to move forward, would we have the opportunity to look at the contract language before we sign?
Yes.
Absolutely.
Okay, that's all I'm interested in. So thank you.
Board members, for clarification, Ms. Wallace submitted her questions this morning, so we did work together to provide that response. I will forward that response to all of you. There were about 11 or 12 questions on there. Specific questions as far as 45 days, completing our due diligence, what in, what type of inspections have already been done on the site. And there were others, several are good questions that I'll go ahead and share those responses with you. Upon our research, and, you know, after further discussion, it would be appropriate for us to update our current contractual language, to make sure that we're reflecting protections to address some of those questions that were asked. They're not explicitly stated in the contract, so it may make great, great deal of sense for us to include that. So we'll bring back a revised contract for the board to see. It didn't, it doesn't change the nature of the contract. What it does do is it provides protection, further protections for the school district when procuring properties. And so apparently, our form just needs to be updated. So it's a good opportunity for us to do that and then revisit others as well, related to procurements. So thank you, Ms. Wallace.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Macklemore. Board members, I'm going to give you an early holiday present. I'm going to skip the budget and staffing discussion today. I'm sorry, Ms. Jenkins, I know you're prepared for it. We're going to bring that back in January, and it may actually be an opportunity for us to incorporate that into the retreat. We're starting to get into information that, quite frankly, is quite detailed and important. And as we, I really want this information before the board, as you noticed, and Ms. Wallace, since you're new to the board, each month, Ms. Jenkins has been presenting information about a unique portion of school funding, so that we can make sure that as we get towards the end of the year, we're making informed decisions, and that the board has all the background information that they feel they need. We don't necessarily do this just for board members. You guys get a lot of this information from your professional associations, through your tenure on the board. Many of you are deeply involved and have a deep understanding of this. But this is also an opportunity for us to put it out there for the general public. So it's an effort for us to be transparent. So, Ms. Jenkins, no offense, I just think that's going to be part of my holiday gift to the board, because many of them will say, if you want to get a good night's sleep, all you got to do is read the funding book, and that'll help you find a couple of quick Z's. So that being said, board members, there are two information items. There's a donation report and a grants management report. Those are on there for your review and consideration. And then, Mr. Chair, I will turn it back over to you for the board meeting agenda.
You're welcome. Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Superintendent. Board members, if we could, at this time, I would like for us to go over our agenda for this evening's meeting. So I'll give you a second to move over to our, in board docs, to our meeting. All right, so are there any questions on sections A through F? Any questions? I do want to just highlight that after we accept the school board agenda, we will have a musical performance in here tonight. Want to make sure everyone's aware of that. So this area up here will be rather crowded, but we'll have a great performance. Are there any other questions on A through F? Seeing none? Are there any questions? Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see it. Yes, ma'am.
They were supposed to come for recognition for the three schools. I thought it was on the agenda. Maybe I missed it?
Oh, for recognition?
Yes.
Let me look. Yes, they had to back out. They notified Ms. Winchester, she's informing me. We will absolutely reschedule them for a future date. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I know you're going to work through the agenda, but I did want to point out one alter, one change that was made based off a potential conflict of interest for one of our board members. I mean, just a matter of transparency, one item was pulled and moved to action agenda. And that item, it was the Biz Town JA Discovery at Tennerock High School. So that item was moved, because Ms. Miller is employed by that organization, and she doesn't want there to be a conflict, and it can't remain on consent in that regard, so it was moved here for a vote.
All right, and Ms. Miller? Okay, excellent. Excellent. Ms. Fields, you have anything else? Is that the only?
No, thank you.
You're welcome. All right, anything else for A through F? Seeing none? Now let's go to G through K, that is consent agenda, board items through the chief of consent agenda, chief of staff. Is there any speakers? And Mr. Keys, you're recognized. And Mr. Keys, you're recognized.
In reference to H five, just for informational purposes, I know that we had talked at some time, and it may have preceded my time on the board, about doing a standalone facility to get out of the shopping center there in Publix, and I just want to know if, what the process that, because I see this is for the extension of the lease of the current place. We have, I think it's been mentioned in the past that conditions where there were less than favorable as far as the quality of the facility, and I just was looking for some kind of update on where we are with the potential of a standalone site for that.
I will provide that this evening, sir.
Okay, thank you.
I'll include that in the superintendent's report, or if you recall, you can inquire of me during the meeting.
Excellent, thank you.
All right, is there, are you done, Mr. Keys?
Yep.
Excellent. Any other question, any other speakers for G through K? Seeing none. Clear that. L through N, L through N, that is consent agenda facilities through consent agenda IT. Recognize Dr. Allen.
Thank you, Chair. Looking at N two for a moment there, Superintendent Hyde, and definitely not needing this data tonight, but when this came forward, I'm just looking at that, and it's reflective of some, some new initiatives that are happening across the state. We've got a group that's moving into the state of Florida from Texas as it relates to planting cell towers on school campuses to better cell service, and, and this is an opportunity, obviously, to capitalize on some revenue generation from the tower rental that's a part of, you know, cell providers leasing space to better that coverage. But when I saw this come forward, it did spark a little element of safety and security concern, so, you know, yes, I think there's that initiative that we're moving away from our analog phone lines to be reliant upon cell service, in particular, as relates to emergency or a power issue. But it just sparked an interest, because I did look at some data from that group that was analyzing a couple of different school sites in Polk that had just, you know, very limited cell coverage. So I do have a concern. I definitely, I'm in favor of this, I think, you know, this is a requirement, in a sense, but just top of mind from a safety issue, if we're put in a situation of some power issue or some emergency situation like this, that our teachers, administrators wouldn't have access to cell service. Just wanted to bring that to your attention, and maybe an opportunity for us to hear from that group as well.
And if I may, just to give you a little bit of background, because that was brought to my attention, so there's a little bit of due diligence we're performing before we engage. Having had experience with this previously as a superintendent, fall radius is your biggest concern. The size of the tower, you have to basically draw a line or circle that basically would encapsulate or encompass the entire potential fall radius for that said tower. We had the same thing in Illinois with wind turbines. They were a great way for us to generate additional revenue for the school district. In many instances, it could offset your entire operational cost, but the fall radius is what typically prevented school districts from being able to contractually do that, because you couldn't do it safely. And in the rare event that that were to happen, it's something that you have to be considerate of. So we are performing our due diligence to review what those restrictions, limitations would be before we ever engage with an individual group to pursue that. That, that has been around for quite a long time in public education, and it's a great opportunity, so long as where the need is, we can safely do something. And then the other part that we have to do our due diligence on is restrictions within the county as they may pertain to visual blight. A lot of times, there may be restrictions within certain municipalities or cities or counties, that if a cell phone tower goes up, it has to somehow be enhanced so it blends in with the skyline. So there's a lot of things that we are investigating now, so thank you for bringing it up. I just want to make the board know we are, because several of you have spoken to me about this opportunity, so we are pursuing it, and we're showing an interest in it, but we just want to do our due diligence first. Thank you, sir.
Any additional questions?
That's all I have, Chair, thank you.
All right, Board Member Keys.
I just, I just want to say kudos to the superintendent on that, because I had never considered the terminology fall radius when talking about these, so, no, seriously, though we're smiling and we kind of joke about it, but I think the amount of work that goes into considering all avenues is commendable, so thank you for the hard work on that, that's phenomenal.
Thank you.
All right, seeing no additional speakers. Let's go to sections O through T, that's consent agenda, learning support through consent agenda workforce. Any questions? No, seeing none. Our action agenda, we have four items there. Any questions on the action agenda? No, we do have a public hearing. Oh, Dr. Allen.
Yeah, ma'am, I think my question, and I brought that question to Mr. Green earlier, so this action item on the resolution U four is in support of us moving this item to public hearing, and I just was seeking some clarity on that, because it's the same resolution that's actually in the public hearing, so I just want to have a little point of clarification on that.
Ms. Green.
I apologize, my, my agenda I'm looking at goes up to U three, so what, what does U four say?
Resolution twenty twenty-five, twenty-six dash eleven.
Yeah, and maybe I missed it in looking at the earlier agenda.
That's been pulled.
Okay, so maybe Superintendent, you can help me understand that one. So we initially had it as a public hearing item as well?
Yes, so this had to do with the COPS financing.
Correct.
And it was delivered to us to put on the board agenda for this evening, because one of the particular land sites that we're currently negotiating was part of that financing, and that's a piece that we're in the process of working through the assignment of that particular piece of property. Basically, we needed to get that finalized to, to the satisfaction of the financing piece of this puzzle before we had a vote this evening. So, the decision was made late last week on Friday afternoon, I believe, to extend that to the January meeting, and that would give us time to do our due diligence on the other, that other piece of property.
Do we have that, Superintendent?
Yes, sir, we will make the, we will make the correction. All right. And then, Mr. Green, just for clarification, you'll re-advertise a public hearing for that, or that the public hearing tonight will proceed? I'm uncertain.
Either way, I'll, yeah, I, we'll probably re-advertise.
Okay.
I think that's the safest, yeah.
Yes, sir.
So are we still voting on the resolution tonight, is my question?
No.
No, sir.
So we're not, so that will be pulled?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Any other questions, Dr. Allen?
Not at this time, no, thank you.
All right, Ms. Fields.
I have a question on item three, the contract extension for the board auditor. Is that going to be discussed now or later?
Well, we'll also, we'll have a discussion on it here in the work session part.
Okay, I'll just wait.
Okay. Yes, ma'am. You're welcome. Any other additional discussion on action agenda items? All right, seeing none. We also have the, we just talked about the public hearings. Any questions on our public hearing? V? Any items there? Seeing none. Superintendent, you will have a report, correct?
Yes, sir, I will.
Excellent. Ms., Mr. Green, it looks like you have something for us in our attorney's report?
Yes, sir, there should be two items.
Okay. And Ms. Matthews, will you have an auditors' report tonight or not? Okay, excellent. And then we will wrap up with our comments and our public comments and our board comments, so. All right, seeing no questions on that. Is there any other general questions on the agenda before we move on? No, if not, if we can take this time to go back to our work session agenda? All right, we're down to G one, contract extension for the board auditor, so we'll have a discussion on that right now. I want to just give some background information. Our auditor, Ms. Matthews, discussed with me on December first that she was interested in extending her time with us here at Polk County Public Schools, because, of course, the legislature extended drop by three years, from five years to eight years, and so she had a desire to extend her contract from June twenty twenty-six to June twenty twenty-nine, the extension would be. Now, I will tell you that her contract language says it must be, this, any extension must be approved by December fifteenth, and so I did get an email earlier after some discussion, and Attorney Green, you can chime in on this too, we had some, you had some discussion as well as Mr. Bridges with Ms. Matthews, and the email did state that we could go back-to-back this tonight, or we could talk about it during the work session today and then potentially bring it for an action agenda item in January, and Ms. Matthews said she was okay with either one. Okay, so I don't know if you could discuss that at all.
Yeah, sure, it was basically, Ms. Matthews was gracious enough to grant some extra time if the board needed, because we were going back-to-back this evening due to, again, the board trying to accommodate Ms. Matthews and making that tough decision on whether to retire or to extend, and then the board's decision to try to get that on the agenda before the contractual date of December fifteenth. It was put on both the work session and then back-to-back for a decision on the renewal during the board meeting this evening. To alleviate some of that time pressure, there was a discussion with Ms. Matthews, and she said she'd be willing to waive that hard deadline of no later than December fifteenth and give us the leeway to make a vote at the next board meeting on the twenty-seventh of January if need be.
Okay, all right. Excellent. So, now with that background information, we'll open it up for some discussion. Mr. Keys.
So I, I have kind of two pieces. One, I don't see a problem with going back-to-back, I think we're all well-aware of what Ms. Matthews does in her job, and I think that's the thing, but I would also say too, is that if we didn't explore that option of extending the contract, what options do we have otherwise? And I don't think that we've done the prudent planning to have that, so what would we do without an auditor at that point? Those are my only comments.
Okay, excellent. Ms. Fields.
I had a conversation with Mr. Green earlier today, and back-to-back, to me, if it is an emergency and necessary, then I am okay with it, but I know that we have had ample enough time to at least have some type of suspense, I think, going forward. Anyone that's on a contract, we need to have a tickler date so that when it's time, we won't be waiting until a few weeks before the December date or whatever the date is to present it to the board for a discussion, because what if we don't want to renew the contract? There should be some indication by way of evaluation, it should be. So, that's my, I don't have any problem with extending Ms. Matthews' contract. I do think that we need to be thinking of a succession plan if we don't already have that in place, and I think that when discussions like this, or when items like this come for us, that everyone needs to be involved in conversation in making sure that we are in fact wanting to renew the contract, and I hope I'm making sense. I just think that it could have easily been for discussion today and for approval in January. I don't think that it has to be today, but if the board has, if it's a consensus that we do it today for both, discussion and approval, I'm not going to vote against it. And that, that's the end of my, my comments.
Thank you. I'm, I'm not going to respond after every single person, but I did want to just address the reason why I asked to bring it back-to-back was because of that December fifteenth part in her, her contract, but I think in the future, we need to be a little more proactive in talking about this prior, so I appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
Board Member Wyatt.
Thank you, I have a couple of comments. So we redid the last contract while I was chair, and at that time, we actually, did we add the assistant director position, or we just filled the assistant director position? We added the assistant director of internal audit for that very reason, because we thought she was going to be retiring. So that was one of the questions that I had when I talked to Ms. Matthews this week, was just, you know, what is, what is the plan there? I think we still have an assistant director that, you know, a couple more years to feel really, really comfortable in that role, to help with some of that succession planning would be, would be helpful. I'm thrilled to have Ms. Matthews stay on, because I think she's been a great asset, and she has a wealth of knowledge that I don't think you can, can totally soak up in, in a year and a half to two years, because she's been, been in that role for a long time, but I'm happy to support, I'm happy to wait until January with her blessing, is, you know, the December fifteenth is a deadline that's in her contract, so I want to make sure that we're respectful of that. The one other thing that I, I think that this probably would fall under is having all of those dates captured is something that our admin should probably have in their responsibilities, because with the chair changing over every year to two years, it's really hard to keep track of, you know, it's not like every November, we need to look at everybody's contracts, it's, well, Ms. Matthews is November of twenty twenty-five, but Mr. Green's is going to be November of twenty twenty-seven, and that there's, you know, keeping track of, okay, this, you know, I need to make sure the new chair knows this, because they started on Tuesday, and this needs to happen on Thursday, so I think that's something that we probably need to make sure goes into that as well.
And I, I want to discuss this later during board comments, but I did have an informal evaluation last Friday per his contract with Mr. Green, and that's one thing that I've tasked Mr. Green with, is to create a document of all the dates for our contracts, for all four of our contracts, and that way we know ahead of time, well, this has to be done by this date, so we're not kind of waiting last minute, and so that's, just for your reassurance, I have tasked Mr. Green with that, so.
That's helpful. I, I still think with a board changeover, that that's something that our admin should be reminding us of, as, as new people come in and out.
Gotcha. What admin?
Go ahead.
Our admin.
Our assistant.
Should be reminding us of when contracts, so.
So I do. I have put that in emails to the board, so I'm, are you referring to my office or you're referring to?
No, 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 to our.
Okay. I'm partially hearing, I'm sorry. I just want to make sure.
When we have, we have lots of contracts and things that come up, not, you know, on a regular, they are on a regular schedule, but they're three years and they're all on a different three years, so having that list in our office that, you know, this is something, hey, you're the new chair, this is something you need to bring up.
Mm-hmm.
Because really, it's when we're planning the agenda, it's the responsibility of the chair to make sure things like that end up on the.
Right.
The agenda.
Right.
But when you have a chair that's changing over every couple of years, it gets harder and harder to keep track as we add more contracts, so.
Yeah.
Having a running list in our office that our admin can keep, help keep tabs of, to make sure we don't miss anything.
So that since.
They're kind of the through line between all of the chairs.
And since Ms. Vega reports to me, is the, we can talk about this at the retreat if you'd prefer, is the expectation that we add it to your calendar, so that you get a reminder thirty days out, six, or just?
We can talk about it in the retreat.
Perfect.
All right, I, I just would say, since, since our attorney is creating that document, that is a document that should live in our administrative assistance office with him, because he's a, he's an expert in contracts, obviously, while we hired him, so having him create that document, having it live there, I think would be the best format. You have any other questions? Okay. Board Member Miller.
Thank you. Agree, I appreciate that we've added the position in that office. I can tell you just by watching, like, a lot of our positions in the higher-level skillset offices, our pay grades are not competitive with the private market, and we lose people out of that office a lot. We lose people out of several of our offices, but that's one we've seen turnover in. So, yes, we need to be building a succession plan, but I appreciate the fact that our auditor is willing to stay on and help, because this is a huge organization that has a lot of historical content and a lot of systems set, and I think that's one thing that we can, we can take from that office. There are, there are a lot of systems set there, but you would need someone with, with her level of skillset to make sure it's seamless, so I appreciate her wanting to stay on, and I, I am really excited to hear that we are going to have the conversation about organization, and I appreciate the chair addressing that. The information to assist board members in knowing what's coming up and what's next needs to be something that's a live document, something that's procedural, it can go in It can go in the procedural guide we're still working on, but it would be helpful as new board members come and go, that there is one place where board members can go to have this information. So whether it's online or old-school in a binder, I look forward to that conversation.
Thank you, Board Member Miller. Board Member Fields?
I would just say that I had spoken to Mr. Green earlier today about establishing a ticker system, and I think that it rests underneath the attorney's office, with the information being shared with the executive assistant and whoever else needs to be informed. But I think with the contracts and everything, that that's something that, when we can discuss it when we have our retreat, that should rest with the attorney.
Thank you, Board Member Fields. Dr. Allen?
Chair Sharpless. Yeah, and I would commend, you know, looking at the contract, Ms. Wyatt, on that, because the December 15th deadline, in essence, was to discuss Ms. Matthews' contract, whereas her contract expires technically in April, June, rather. So it does, it gives us, you know, ample time to discuss if we need it to pivot. So I think, Ms. Wyatt, that was a good move on your part. And, you know, reflecting on the evaluative that was just done, I'm going to read just, you know, some of the qualitative words that came from our collective evaluation of the work that you've done in the district, and it is basically predominantly positive, and to actually strongly positive. So with this consistent recognition of Ms. Matthews' expertise, her professionalism, and reliability as well. So, I mean, I think, you know, obviously, the board is in favor of the work that you're doing. So I'll definitely be supporting that extension as well. That's all I have, Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Allen. Board Member Wallace?
This is just a random question, and I'm using Ms. Matthews' contract as an example, not personal to you, but how do we pick the amount of time that a contract is effective? Like, are we choosing this extension specific to her retirement situation? Or like, let's say she had 20 years left, how much time would a contract like this normally go?
That's a great question. So in this particular...
Or whoever's supposed to, yeah, is that your, okay?
I mean, I can tell you the reason why it's drafted for this today. I can't tell you, you know, the history, but today, it's because she did say she was going to retire in three years. And so, I mean, the board also could do renewal, could edit that, we could amend that and make renewal less. But this is to lock her in for her retirement in this particular situation for three years. But we could, you can change renewal terms or any of that when we bring that as an action agenda item, or I would, it's probably better to discuss that during work session and then have it ready for that. But absolutely. So and Superintendent Attorney Green, you can discuss also that question as well? I mean, how do we determine the terms?
Sure. You know, with, like, for instance, my term also happens to be three years. That was a board decision. So typically, I think employment contracts tend to be in that range for both, so that you're not having to hire somebody new, you know, after a particular period of time. But with other contracts that the board reviews, with vendors, for instance, they tend to be on a yearly basis. Sometimes there's a pricing benefit to having a longer-term contract, three to five years, and I work with Mr. Craig to, on getting a better deal if it's a longer-term contract. So it kind of depends, the bottom line is, it depends on the contract and what you're negotiating. But in terms of the employment contracts, I think they tend to be in the three-year range typically. But that's not a requirement, it just happens to be what the board's decided in the past.
Thank you. Board Member Wallace, you have any other questions?
Maybe, but I can tell Board Member Miller would like to say something.
Well, I already, only because I listen to other people's conversations, just kidding. There's one by statute that's set, and that's the superintendent's, the rest is board decision. So if, and I think it would be very difficult to do a long, I mean, it would be too, the liability of having a really long one would be a problem, but you're right, too short of a contract, we run into turnover. We won't find this, I'll just be very honest, you won't find this quality or depth of someone who came from the private sector into the public sector for what we pay. So, yeah.
Great. No, and I wasn't, I wasn't, as a follow-up, I just like to know the why, and so it's good to know, or like, if, you know, we cater to each situation, like Mr. Green said, or if there's like a specific standard practice, or that's what the market commands, or whatever. I was just curious. So that was all helpful. So thank you. Thank you all.
Board Member Fields?
Ms. Wallace, historically, it's been three years, and the superintendent's has been more than three years, but everyone else has basically been three. You're welcome.
Board Member Wyatt?
Thank you. I was just going to add to what Ms. Field said. So we actually went through two years ago, maybe three years ago now, because it did used to, every year, it would extend if we didn't notify them by, I think it was January 1st or February 1st, it would just automatically extend. So we actually took that provision out, so it doesn't automatically extend. We actually have to have the conversation, that you don't end up, December 15th sneaks up on you, and now you're, you have somebody for another year because you forgot to talk about it. So that's, that was changed a couple of years ago.
All right. So I'm hearing, I'm hearing the board say that, you know, certainly everyone's comfortable with extending this, but some people would like a little more time to review the contract, from what I'm hearing. So I think it would be appropriate superintendent to move this to action agenda in January. Superintendent?
Sir?
Hear me? I said, from what I'm hearing the board say, it would make sense to turn this action, move this action agenda item to January, with Ms. Matthews' blessing on that, through email, right, saying that she's okay with that, the December 15th clause in the contract. But we have discussion at work session today, and then I would suggest bringing it back work session again in January, and then back, bring it back-to-back in January. Just to have any final discussions.
Ms. Matthews, could I ask you to come to the podium, just to say that for the record?
Sure.
Because the audience, while you nodded yes, the audience won't capture that. So it's just a matter of procedural. And then...
Email me.
Yes, we will, we will make that adjustment during the break, and move that from action from today, and we'll move it to January, to the agreeable date.
So yes, I'm fine with moving the action, the vote on the extension of my contract to January, so that you don't have to do it back-to-back.
Thank you, Ms. Matthews.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much. So I'm not hearing any other discussion on this. If it's, speak now or forever hold your peace on that. If not, and we're going to move into our G2 item for our work session, you can see it attached to this agenda item on our board committee assignments. I do want to take just a second for some background knowledge. I think this is, and this is my opinion, going forward in future years, so we don't have such a tight window, I would suggest the board chair send out this information at the beginning of, prior to the reorg, and let people digest it a little bit, because I know it's hard, when you get something on Monday, to have everything filled out by Friday. All right? Because literally last week, last Monday, I sent you got, to Ms. Vega, all the committees and the information. I compiled that Excel sheet that I sent to Ms. Vega, for you all to see, from all the different documents we have. Okay? And so I feel like going forward, now, the new board chair, whoever the next one is, would make the recommendations, but to give everyone the time to think through which committees they may want to be on, the current board chair would need to send that out, I would say, early November. That's my opinion. Certainly, you guys can disagree with that. That's the background. Because I know it only gave you a week to determine which, what is your, you know, what would be your desire to serve on what committees? Okay? But you do have, from all the feedback that, you know, Ms. Vega compiled for me, from all of your desires on which appointments you would like, I spent some time creating an Excel spreadsheet, figuring out who liked what, and it, you know, I had my own formula of how I did it, but I tried to give everyone committees that they are excited to serve on. I hope you all see that there. The only thing I will, I do want to make one caveat before we open it up for speakers. I did discuss with Ms. Porter, with the Polk Education Foundation, that they had a desire, they have a desire for their board member appointment to be a two-year appointment, just like Polk Vision, just like FSBA, because it's really hard for someone to understand everything the Polk Education Foundation does in a year. And so my recommendation going forward is to, is for us to change that in our procedures of how we do that, to have board members serve two-year terms. Therefore, that's why you'll see on my recommendations to continue to have Vice Chair Keys as the PEF rep. Okay? And that was, again, from their board of directors, from their executive director, Ms. Porter, after a phone call I made to her. Okay? And so, having said that, I want to open it up for discussion on the recommended appointments. I can read through those if you want me to, or you also have that attached document. It's up to you. So is there any discussion on the recommended appointments? Ms. Fields?
I don't really have any concerns on the appointment, and you're right, Mr. Sharpless, it is a fast process when you're transitioning from one chair to the other. I would suggest, as you said, the first of November, or definitely right after the November board meeting, getting information to the board members as quickly as possible. But whatever works for whoever is going to be the chair is fine. And then the other thing is, I don't have a problem with the Polk Education Foundation two-year term, but just keep in mind, for future purposes, that means that only five of the school board members will be able to serve on that foundation, if you're going to give two, two years. So just keep that for whatever it's worth. But great job. Thank you.
Thank you. And I will say, too, to that, that that was their desire. They also understand that we control our appointments, so we don't have to follow that. That's why I open it up for your discussion, certainly. Board Member Wyatt?
Thank you. I would agree with getting the information out earlier, though I think we probably all have some understanding of what committees we want to serve on and about when the timeframe is that we'll be requesting. But I do, when it comes to PEF, I love the idea of serving for two years. They only meet quarterly, so four meetings to figure out what you're doing is not a lot of time. But I also would, and we had this conversation a couple of years ago before Ms. Copeland passed, that it is not in anybody's bylaws or any type of statute that it has to rotate from board member to board member. If we're doing it two years, it can be just like any other, people can put their names in for it. I would encourage us not to rotate to the next number, because that would mean essentially only, people that really, really want to serve may not ever get the opportunity to, just because you can only be here eight years, and there's not enough years. So, and there may be a board member that that's just not their top passion, they would much rather do a finance committee or something like that. So just for what it's worth, I think that we should definitely go that route of making it up for whoever is interested in serving in it, can serve in that capacity.
Thank you, Board Member Wyatt. Board Member Miller?
Thank you. I appreciate the organization of that, was easy to read. On the, what we added to the agenda is Word documents, and it all got messed up, but the Excel sheet is really, was really easy to read, and that was informative. The one board that I sit on, the committee that I sit on, that you had the question marks by, I just want to give a little more information. I would love to hand that off when my term ends, which is also very important, that you're reaching out to the different committees, because they're all so different. The transportation planning committee with the Board of County Commissioners is the disadvantaged TPO, and so it has a lot to do, that's where our school's set, and when I joined the board, it was just vacant. And the person that fills it as, if I can't attend, is actually out of our transportation department. But that's one I've just always sat on, because it was vacant, and I don't know if there are others. But I think it's good that we have them listed like that, and I'll make sure that that information of how long those terms are, once you're, once you're, once that's joined, will be in that document, so people can look at it. It might, if their term doesn't work for us, we might need to have that discussion, because if it's a three-year term, that might be too long for the board, and maybe somebody else would like a term to serve. And plus, the people serving, there's so many great things to be involved with, it helps us have more interest. But I do appreciate the organization of that, and the fact that that will be a live document that we can go to for reference in the future, so it will fall in a schedule. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Miller. Board Member Keys?
I'm going to second what Board Member Miller said about the Excel spreadsheet. I'm a little bit of a spreadsheet nerd. So anytime you hand me something on a spreadsheet, I get really excited about it. I will say, just for appointment durations, I'm really concerned about the Junior Achievement Board of Directors alternate, their term expiring in 2005, I think we're overdue on that one. Little joke there. But that being said, back to the discussion about PEF, is the sitting current board member that I think, the comment was made about, and Ms. Wyatt, about that going rotating by number, and I think it's a very valid comment, because there may be those board members that don't have any desire whatsoever to sit on the PEF board. I said, so I think now is the opportune time, we're talking about extending that term to two years, but also the way that is appointed, I think, is very valid. So, and that, and that came up again, and I'll let the rest of the board members know, in our discussion, we had some kind of strategic planning on PEF board. It was, hey, we only have a board member for a year, you know, just about the time you get really excited about it is the time you're rolling off. And whereas, again, where I think Ms. Wyatt's comment is so valid, is because, you know, although somebody may not get a chance to serve on that board, somebody may not want to serve on that board. And I frankly, there's, to be completely honest, there's some boards in here that I really, not that I don't have any interest in, they don't excite me, and I would rather be doing something that I'm 100% to, and that's something that interests me than rather than serving on a board, just because we are obligated to have an appointment to it. So those are, those are my comments. So thank you for your hard work on that. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Board Member Keys. Board Member Wallace?
So had we stuck to the established plan, I would have rotated onto the PEF board, and I was very much looking forward to that, Mr. Vice Chair. However, I think that the wisdom of making sure we get quality over quantity, that our, when we have representation on these boards, that our representatives are able to get knowledgeable and comfortable and add more value, willing to be patient, should, whether it's myself or whoever is elected next year to the seat, it makes sense that we would have the opportunity to make sure our board members... Just one idea, like, if we were concerned about not everybody having the opportunity to serve on that particular board, is to see with Ms. Porter if we could add one more seat, and we could have staggered, right? Like, we could have our first-year school board member and a second-year school board member, although I don't know if four times a year, they end up discussing board business, and then you can't have two board members in the room. Is that a challenge?
It'd be voting and non-voting would be the issue.
Okay. Well, then, I'm just, never mind. So overall, I would have, I would, the trade-off of having more experience, I support that idea.
Thank you, Board Member Wallace. I see, yes, Superintendent?
I'm just seeking clarification, because this will require some revision after you make your committee decisions. Is this the only committee that the board is considering modifying the term to two years? Everything else will remain a single year?
Well, some of them currently are not, but any of the current single years to two...
This is the only change...
Correct.
...that I need to bring back in January?
Yes.
Okay.
Unless I hear of any others. No? I see no other, no other board member comments, so I'm assuming everyone's happy with their committees. So that being said, now we'll go down to our, let me pull this up, committee or liaison updates. So if you have any of those, please, please signify you'd like to speak. I do want to just touch on something I discussed earlier. Per his contract, I did meet with Mr. Green on Friday, after I got back from the Florida School Board Association's annual conference, and we had an informal review. This is not a, again, it's not as formalized review, but in his contract, an informal review. I can say personally, I'm very pleased with the work that Mr. Green has done for us. And with that being said, if there's any board members that would like to give feedback to Mr. Green, he's welcome for a one-on-one meeting, for any informal feedback that you're wanting to give him. So, you know, I... feedback that you're, you're wanting to give him. So, you know, that's after me and him had our discussion. He said, absolutely, he would love to meet with you if you had any, any feedback for him, for a review. Okay? Is there any other board member comments? Dr. Allen.
On that item, when, when is the timeline for his evaluation? Because I know is, it was a...
One-year mark.
The one-year mark?
Yeah.
Okay.
Prior to June 15th of 2026.
Okay. All right. That's all I had in regard to that.
Now, I would like to put that, I unmuted your microphone, so.
Sorry about that.
It's okay.
The, the formal evaluation is at the one-year mark, which would be June fif, prior to June 15th, 2026.
Excellent. All right. And I did have one item. I just wanted to note, this past week, I had a chance to take part in the Board of Directors with the FSBA. I appreciate the opportunity to serve in that capacity. It was, it was a pretty active conference. I don't know if you all read any headlines at all. But, in general, the board met on December 2nd, and we reviewed extensive updates to our legislative platform. There were some federal alerts that we considered, and legal issues, as recent as the Lee County ruling, which is very interesting, if you want to read that one. Update on superintendent, superintendent searches from around the state as well. But in particular, the Long Range Planning Committee approved their recommended strategies for the 2026 to 31 Strategic Plan. On top of that, the Finance Committee approved, well, the BOD approved the recommendation from the Finance Committee. As you know, our, our chair actually is the treasurer of that, of the FSBA organization, and he recommended to the body, the Board of Directors, which then went to the general body, no dues increases for the FSBA membership. So, Chair Sharpless, thank you for that leadership in that capacity. The Advocacy Committee, there was an emergency platform item related to the Schools of Hope that was presented to the Board of Directors per policy, and we did pass that unanimously as well. Let's actually add it to the legislative platform for the FSBA. And a couple other minor things as well. So, that's my update on the FSBA Board of Directors meeting.
Thank you. Yes, and not wanting our district to have to pay anymore, I certainly was very enthusiastic to say no dues increase. Those that were present at that meeting can tell you how enthusiastic I was. All right. Board Member Wyatt.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Allen, for that update. Is, do we think that that's something that we should look at adding to our legislative platform as well?
As far as the Schools of Hope.
The Schools of Hope. Superintendent Hyde.
Yeah, so I didn't know, saw that it was actually on the agenda for our board retreat to discuss, but maybe that would be a good time for us to consider that.
Okay. I just hate to wait too late, because I don't want to not have it on our platform going into session. But, you know, I'd be interested to see the language on it. I do think that that's something that's going to be important for our district, as we're already receiving proposals. And while, you know, I, I love all of the people that want to come visit my house. I don't want anybody moving into my spare bedroom.
I think the concern I have is that, you know, the language is now being modified to create even more flexibility and diminish the whole purpose of why the schools were created in the first place, which was to serve under you, underperformed and underserved students in low-performing school settings. And now, the allowance allows them to basically establish anywhere they want, if there's no room close in proximity to a school that arguably the Schools of Hope were designed to, to support students. And then it eliminates lottery and eliminates a lot of things. So, there's a lot to this topic, which is why I put it on a retreat. So, I think that might, if, if the board's interest is for a legislative agenda, I can definitely work with Ms. Dodge to see if we can draft something and get it out to the board very quickly. And we can definitely add it as an addendum if the board sees fit.
If that's something that we need to vote on, is it possible to add a board meeting at the end of our board retreat, just to vote on that topic on the 9th?
So, long as it's duly advertised and noticed, yes. Absolutely.
I'm only one board member, so I'll let my colleagues talk. I do have an update from my committee after, but I'll let other colleagues add on before, if they would like.
Mr. Green, that, that's correct. So, long as it's duly noticed and advertised and in public forum, we can, we can add an emergency or special meeting to the end of the retreat.
That's correct.
Board Member Keys, is it about this item, your discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
So, I will tell you, in sitting in that meeting too, the Advocacy Committee, the discussion was very, very involved on this subject matter, and they actually, there was conversation of separating it out on its own, and then taking a separate, taking that to kind of show the importance of it, saying, hey, this needs to be addressed apart from FSBA's legislative platform. And that being said, I think it, you know, ultimately decided, we know it's important, we're going to, we're going to advocate for it. So, I think that it behooves us to, to have a real conversation about it, because FSBA is going to be legislating very actively for it and advocating, you know, FSBA's position on that, right? Which I think, so I, again, I think the timeliness of us discussing it is good, and I think that it behooves us to address it as what our stance on it is now, or let me say sooner rather than later. So, I agree with you.
Board Member Wallace, is this pertaining to this item?
Yes.
Okay. You're, you're recognized.
Thank you. Superintendent Hyde, I would look forward to the opportunity during our retreat to get a full overview, just based on even a prior conversation we had about all the questions that we have as a district about, like, set one philosophical views aside, whether you want to see more Schools of Hope or not, or you want to see co-location or not. What are the practical questions we have, right? If we want to follow law, if we want to, you know, have predictability, less chaos, all the things, right? That, to me, with our retreat being really early, I agree with Board Member Wyatt's desire to have something ready to go. But at the same time, we know that a lot of these things are tweaked throughout session, that we can communicate with our delegation, that we do plan to come forward. It would be my view that we could all have a comprehensive overview at the retreat, reach some consensus around what that position ought to be like, what, you know, mainly go to the legislature with our, our asks there. And then if we needed a couple weeks into session to, to get our homework done, and then, but let our leadership know that that's coming, I, I feel like the juice would be worth the squeeze to, to wait on that and not have to rush into, or in my view, it would be rushing into taking a position if we were to vote on it immediately. I think it's worth to wait a couple weeks and, or into session, get it, get everything done and thought through, and then send it on.
And there will be a lot of discussion about this topic during legislative session. We are not the only school district who has expressed concerns, and I think Ms. Wallace addresses it. You could philosophically, pedagogically, we could have a lot of conversation around whether or not the, the concept makes sense. For us, it's the operational piece. It's how do you operationalize this concept in its current format? And the one question, as an example, the one I tee up for everyone all the time, is there's nothing in the statute or the rule that currently explains what we're to do in a growing district, where we're not seeing declining enrollment. If a School of Hope moves into a currently vacant spot, and we either have to rezone, or growth means that current students who are within the attendance boundary of that school would arguably now need that space, do I kick the school out? That's the, those are the questions that have, that were, were never even thought of, were never addressed. And, and those are the things that most of us are struggling with. This, this approach to passing a law and will fix it and identify the details later is absolutely the wrong way for us to be implementing education policy. I don't think anyone at this, in this room doubts, you know, disagrees with that. We need better clarity, we need better support, we need better understanding, and that should come in the form of technical assistance on the leading edge of potential legislation, not after the fact, when districts realize and push back, because nobody bothered to pick up the phone and call us and talk to us about potential issues with legislation that they're contemplating. So, that's my soapbox for the moment, because this is an issue that frustrates me because of the lack of communication. And with all due respect, and I know many will say, well, why aren't you advocating with your legislators? Why do I have to? When are they going to do their job and pick up the phone and call us? Why is it my responsibility to track down every piece of legislation and identify potential pitfalls? And I'm preaching to the choir, I know that. I'm sorry. They are getting red. It, it's just, it's frustrating, and education policy doesn't have to, has, doesn't have to function this way. We are all in the same business of ensuring that every kid has a quality educational experience and gets the best possible outcomes possible that we can create for them. And we do a heck of a good job every day, day in and day out. So, yes, I do get passionate, because these are the things that frustrate me, because these are the things that consume everybody in this room in my time, when it could be better served focusing on classrooms, focusing on kids, focusing on the real issues. So, thank you, Ms. Wallace. I know you didn't intentionally tee it up that way, but I took advantage of it, and I ran with it for a moment. So, thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent. Ms. Wallace, are you...
Just, I want to encourage you, Superintendent.
You muted yourself.
Okay, sorry. I want to encourage you, Superintendent, and everyone, anyone watching, anybody in here, is, it's, it's, I hear your frustration. I would also say we have an opportunity to lead too, right? We have an opportunity to say, okay, let's think of different scenarios, where if an honest broker were to come to us wanting to co-locate, or someone we are not even unhappy to see coming to Polk County, what would, what would that look like? Or how would that make, or, yeah, or can we predict, or can we suggest things? Again, stuff we can discuss in the retreat, but that's where maybe we have the opportunity to ingratiate ourselves and stand out, you know, and, and maybe lead with what would make sense, and hopefully have an influence on what those details look like, even though I get you, I hear you, that it's frustrating to even have to do that. So.
Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Wallace. Board Member Fields, is this regarding this issue?
Yes.
Thank you.
I wasn't able to attend the conference last minute, but I, I believe that we really need to make sure that when we are creating our legislative platform, that we definitely mirror as much as we can from the, from the, from the Florida School Board Association. And I think we've done that in the past, for the most part. And then I would say that what Superintendent Hyde said about Ms. Dodge is very on key, because even though we might not have it on our legislative platform yet, I'm willing to bet you that she is going to be joining on the spot, and she'll be representing us well when it comes to that issue. So, I just wanted to make sure that, that we know that even if it's not right on the platform at this moment in time, we're at it, if it's everyone's agreement. But believe me, she is working for our good, even as we speak. At least, I believe that she is.
I agree wholeheartedly. Board Member Wyatt.
Thank you. Again, my, my only concern with waiting too long past the 9th is that session is starting, and that Polk County Day happens before us having another board meeting where we could actually vote on. I'd love to be able to see it go up, be able to go up with us. But that's just my, my opinion as one board member. It's just nice to be able to, you know, when people are, when you're walking into legislators' offices, they have six legislative agendas on their desk from education partners, and they all have the same thing on them, just tends to speak a little bit louder. But thank you again, Dr. Allen, for, for bringing that up. I think it's one of those, you know, had it happened two weeks earlier, it probably would have been on our platform already, but just the timing of it, didn't realize how big of an issue it was going to be until, until it happened. But what I originally pressed my button to speak on was Junior Achievement, which I'm super excited to be on their board again. Thank you, Mr. Sharpless. We had a board meeting on Friday, as I was serving in, as the alternate previously. There are lots of exciting things coming. The first is that the, this is going to be our first graduating class of 3DE, so we had a lot of exciting conversations about that. They will all have some type of stall at graduation, so we will be able to identify them. One of the things we talked about, which I'll go ahead and put on your radar, Mr. Hyde, is they asked if there was going to be any designation for them, kind of how we have on our programs of if they're Cambridge, there's an asterisk if we would have a designation for them. So, I'm putting that on your radar, that we would love to be able to see them designated somehow similarly, if possible. But it's, it's exciting that we'll have our first class there. The other thing is that we are looking at a groundbreaking for the Discovery Center. My understanding is there's already dirt in pipes, but we are looking at a groundbreaking in March to turn over some dirt next to what is hopefully maybe some concrete. So, that date will be coming out soon.
Eight.
Is it official?
Yes.
It's officially March 8th. Get excited. I can't wait to see all of you there.
We just bring the dirt and the gold shovel. It's the same dirt and gold shovel.
From every, at every groundbreaking, I kind of had a feeling it was, but, because it's always, you know, the mound on top of the dirt that just, we had a nice little mound of dirt right here that we're going to break ground on. But yeah, so that will be March 8th. So, well, Shauna said that they would make sure to get out the official calendar. It's March 6th.
March 6th.
Hold on. I actually put it on my calendar.
Jeremy Cobble, that is a Sunday.
You cannot ever trust...
Me. Just say it. It's fine. March 6th.
It's March 6th at 10:00 a.m. is what I have a hold on my calendar for.
It will be TBA, 9, 9 to 10-ish. We're working on that.
Okay. It's a TBA. But it's on the morning of the 6th. So, the official calendar is coming, but want to make sure you all have that on your radar. Excited to have that opened for next school year.
That morning?
Any other?
That was, that was all for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Wyatt. Board Member Allen.
Actually, I was a continuation of the Schools of Hope, but at this point, I'll just let it die. Thank you.
Okay. I did want to bring one other thing up. And so, last meeting, I had, I've had a discussion with Attorney Green, as well as, from my, just so you all know, I'm, I've coached parliamentary procedure teams here in, in Polk County, something that I'm passionate about. And I've talked to other boards from across the state, and many boards don't have electronic voting, just going to tell you that. So, we're kind of an anomaly on that. But I, I want to make sure, and this is from, from your chair position, I don't think that our, the way we make motions should be determined by an electronic voting system. When we make, if, you know, if someone wants to make an amendment, or if we need to, like, for example, last time we voted to table something, you can easily do that by, by a hand vote, you can do that by a roll-call vote. It doesn't have to be part of our electronic voting system. So, I just want to make sure that I put that out there, so you guys understand that. That's, I feel like parliamentary procedure is created to be able to, to, to come up, when things come up, you're able to address them. And so, I understand the frustration sometimes of, you know, we have this item that's electronically in front of us, we clicked yes, or whatever, but we should, we should be able to, through our review of the minutes, anytime we have an on-the-fly motion like that, we should, I don't think we should hinder our ability to do parliamentary procedure based on our voting system. That, I want to make sure to put that out there. Yes, Board Member Miller.
Thank you. I, there are a lot of boards that use the electronic system, but I did reach out to the attorney and asked him, I don't feel comfortable with our superintendent helping us table topics. I don't think that's his place. So, I, I did reach out to Mr. Green and have the conversation to be, he's a very kind man, a lot like Mr. Wes Bridges was, but I am looking that he may need to help in the most respectful manner that he always will insert himself before we make a, that we have a procedure that, that someone could question what we were doing, because I think that's important. If you want to make a vote, I don't want later someone saying, well, you didn't make the vote because of a technicality. And someone who sat on the old-school FBLA, Future Business Leaders Parliamentary Procedure Team, I understand, I understand the, I understand the importance and concept of it, but I don't think it, I don't, I think there are many boards that run very successfully with electronic systems, and maybe it's the system we're running, and that's could be a conversation for a later date. But I don't want to take away the tools we're using to capture our votes, but that's my input. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Miller. Is there any more discussion on this? Seeing none, with no further business to come before this board, this meeting is adjourned.